Just trying to stay warm.
Stay warm, yeah.
Oh, the rest of you need to sign up and vote by mail, which I did the first day. I already, my ballot is already in.
Did you vote it here?
Hmm? Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I call the Glassboro zoning board of adjustment regular business meeting for October twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Terry, can you please read the open statement act?
Pursuit to the Open Public Meetings Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by adopting a schedule of regular monthly meetings for the year twenty twenty-two, which schedule was posted on the Borough Council voting board, mailed to the South Jersey newspapers and filed with the Borough Clerk.
Everybody rise for salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual and liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Mooning.
Here.
Ms. Camiola.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Present.
Mr. Jimenez.
Here.
Mr. St. Torre.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Perner is excused and Ms. Winey.
Here.
Mr. Costabile.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Ellis, can you swear in our professional?
Well, thank you. The gentlemen, raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information and belief?
I guess.
That's two yeses, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Everybody has a copy of the minutes? Everybody has had a chance to take a look at them? Any questions, comments, concerns? Who have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so be it. All right, everybody has a copy of the bills. Anybody have any questions?
Move the bills be paid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so be it. We have any incoming outgoing correspondence?
We do not.
All right. Anybody here from the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay. Let's start with our first applicant, ZB twenty-two dash zero eight Vision Stream LLC, two forty-five East High Street, block four thirteen, lot fourteen. The zone is R five, looking for a use variance to permit a three-story eighty-nine unit residential apartment building.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you folks hear me well?
Um, a little, a little higher.
Little higher?
Yeah.
Okay, how about this? Good, better, okay. Great. Thank you for your time this evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kevin De Duke. I'm the owner and principal attorney of Katie Law in Haddonfield, New Jersey. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening an application on behalf of my client, an applicant, Vision Stream. Uh, Vision Stream is very much interested in, uh, building a a, a townhome, I'm sorry, a apartment complex within the borough of Glassboro. They've picked a particular site at two forty-five East High Street within the borough's R five district. The site is approximately seven point one seven acres of undeveloped property at the moment. The intention is to construct a three-story eighty-nine unit, uh, market rate apartment complex. We did have the privilege of, uh, appearing before the development review committee. We got some great feedback from them and, uh, we're prepared tonight to present, uh, our application for a use variance for two purposes. One, uh, at the moment in the R five district, multi-family residential dwelling units are not permitted, um, and as well as a height variance, uh, that's part of our application this evening as well. So, um, I believe that you've all been presented with a packet of information. We do have our professionals here. I would like to, um, call up first Mr. Eric Littlehouse from Consulting Engineer Services. Mr. Littlehouse's responsibility this evening will be to, uh, present the schematics of the plan itself, describe the project, uh, what we intend to do, how we intend to do it, and answer any of your questions with respect to that.
So Mr. Littlehouse is your engineer?
That's correct.
All right. You know, is, is the board acquainted with Mr. Littlehouse? I, I just haven't had the pleasure. You want to maybe colloquially, I'm just, you know, briefly?
Yeah, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been a professional engineer for almost twenty years. I have bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Wayne University, uh, and I've, I've presented in numerous boards, uh, including, I believe, your planning board, but maybe not the zoning board here in Glassboro.
Okay, well, you know what? We'll leave it if it was good enough for the planning board, Mr. Chair. Should be good for the zoning, yeah. So, so welcome. Good to see you.
All right, thank you. Uh, you know, if we go over real quick here, um, we got the rendered exhibit here over top, the aerial. Uh, this, this is a rendered of plan that was in your packet or in our submission packet, uh, as was described, we're proposing.
So we'll just call that A one, is that okay, counsel?
That's correct, yeah.
All right.
So as described, as shown in this plan, we're proposing a, uh, three-story apartment building. The total, uh, fifty-nine one-bedroom units and thirty-two bedroom units for a total of eighty-nine units. It's on, uh, East High Street. We have access to the site. We are proposing two driveways. Uh, the parking, the, the main parking lot is located to the rear of the lot.
So now I've got to interrupt you again. I apologize, but your attorney and the board's attorney neglected to ask you to raise your right hand and to, and while we're at it, if it's not an imposition, why don't we have everyone sworn at the same time? So it's over, right?
Guilty is charged.
Well, I re- I recognize your planner. So I ask each of you to raise your right hand and do each of you swear or affirm testimony about to give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information and belief?
I do.
I do.
Okay, just for the record, identify yourself.
Leah Fury Bruder, applicant's planner.
There you go. We know Mr. Littlehouse, so take it away, Mr. Littlehouse.
Okay, again, uh, a total of eighty-nine units in a three-story building, uh, two driveway accesses out to High Street. The majority of the parking lot is located at the rear of the building. We are proposing a smaller lot, uh, located, uh, to the east of the building. Um, this was incorporated comments that we received at the, uh, initial review meeting with, with borough officials. Uh, we're proposing two stormwater basins, uh, obviously on the, the low side of the site. The, the darker green area you see there is what's, uh, environmentally impacted. That's our, you know, kind of the wetlands line, which we just recently, last week, received approval of the LOI for that wetlands line. Uh, access to the site, uh, pedestrian into the building, uh, there are three doorways located from the main parking lot into the building. Uh, I know there was a question in one of the review letters about, uh, doorways being shown on the elevation that faces, faces High Street. Uh, those are, those are doorways that are just access out to balconies. They're not main access into the units. This is a center hall, uh, proposed apartment complex, all the accesses from the inside. Uh, we are proposing, uh, an elevator in this building. It's three stories. There was a question about that. Uh, the, the applicant looked at it and is proposing, uh, one elevator at the center entrance into the building. Surrounding this site, we, uh, we're right next to a small convenience store. We back up to the existing apartment complex, to the, uh, northeast and to the west of us, we have existing residential homes and residential homes on the opposite side of, of High Street. And that's the general summary of the plan that was submitted.
Excellent. Uh, would the board wait, what would like to wait before, uh, ask any questions? So we have both professionals up, or would you like to take them one at a time, as you prefer?
Well, Mr. Chair? We'll take them all at the same time.
Okay, understood. Appreciate that very much. Um, our next witness for this evening is Ms. Leah Fury Bruder. She's a professional planner, uh, the owner of, uh, LFB Land Planning.
Good evening. Um, my name is Leah Fury Bruder. I am a professional planner in the state of New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Um, I, Mr. Ellis, nice to see you.
No, it's good to see you and, and we're well acquainted with Ms. Fury Bruder, so just take it away. You are a professional planner and I've known, uh, you professionally for some time now, so welcome.
Thank you. Um, and I would say, I don't think that I've testified before this board in the past, um, but I have testified before about sixty different municipalities throughout.
You don't want to take the win, do you?
So I'll, I'll take it. I was going to let the board know in case they're, you know, they may be wondering, wait, who are you?
No, 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 no. Ms. Fury Bruder is, is an exceptional planner and I actually even had the pleasure to work with her when I was the solicitor and elk, and she was the town planner.
Right, neighbor, so.
So that's why I, I am being so familiar or, or, or colloquial.
Thank you. Um, so, so thanks for having us here tonight. Um, I just wanted to start off by saying, in preparation for my presentation at tonight's hearing, I have reviewed a number of documents. Um, I reviewed the borough's twenty twenty master plan reexamination report, the twenty twenty-one growth management plan, the two thousand four master plan, the zoning map, of course, the applicable sections of the zoning code, and the review letters prepared by the board's, uh, professionals, the engineer and the planner. Um, I've also visited the site and the surrounding area, um, and I've been, uh, in the area for quite a long, for decades, I've traversed the area, so I am familiar with it. Um, and as ha- has been described, this is, uh, our exhibit A one shows, um, as Mr. Littlehouse, um, explained, we have the site plan on an aerial photograph so we can get the context and see where the site is located. Um, as it's been described, we're here before the board seeking use variance relief, um, to enable a three-story eighty-nine unit residential building on this seven point one seven acre site. It is in the R five residential zoning district and it's currently vacant and undeveloped. The property is surrounded by a variety of uses and zoning districts. Um, the properties to the east are in the R four and the C one zoning districts, and they're developed with the Park Crest Apartments, uh, as well as, um, a new shop and a pizza, uh, I think a pizza place. Then we have, um, properties to the west are in the R five zoning district, and they're developed with residential dwellings along the High Street frontage. I think some of them may have more than one unit, uh, but it's hard to tell. The property to the north is part of, that looks, appears undeveloped, is in the R five zoning district, but is actually part of the Park Crest Apartments lot. Um, and that is, we believe, I believe constrained with wetlands. Then we have, um, across High Street, the, um, I one and R six zoning districts, and they're developed with a mix of commercial and residential, uh, uses. This property, as you can see, is largely developed, uh, in the surrounding area. It's an infill site and it's less than a quarter mile from Delsey Drive, um, the Delsey Drive and the East High Street redevelopment areas to the west. And it's also less than a quarter mile from the redevelopment area now known as High Street Estates to the east, which is currently under development, um, with residential townhomes. The applicant's proposal is to develop this site with a multi-family residential development that will complement and enhance the neighborhood and the business district. In accordance with section one oh seven dash ninety-nine A one, the R five zone permits detached single-family dwellings, schools, churches, municipal uses and family daycare facilities. It does not permit multi-family residential buildings. So a D one use variance is required to permit, to permit a use and principal structure in a district restricted against such use or structure. Additionally, we are requesting a D six variance for the height, uh, to permit a fifty-one foot building, it's three stories, where a maximum of thirty feet are permitted. Though the site is within the R five single-family zoning district, the surrounding area has developed with a variety of commercial, restaurant, office, multi-family and single-family residential uses. The purpose of the R five zoning district is set forth in the borough code, and it is, quote, "to recognize major areas of undeveloped land and to encourage future development to be developed on a comprehensive basis." This site is approximately seven acres, is surrounded to the northeast and west by developed properties, and it's partly constrained by the presence of freshwater wetlands. The site really doesn't represent a major area of undeveloped land, as is envisioned for the R five zoning district. So given the location and the site configuration, it doesn't seem that developing this site, this particular site, um, will un, in this way, will undermine the overall purpose and intent of the R five district throughout the borough. The applicant has designed the site and the preliminary architecture, which we'll show that elevation shortly, to complement this surrounding area. The proposed building will be set back sixty feet from the future right-of-way line along East High Street with pedestrian amenities and landscaping along the frontage. The parking and stormwater management areas will be located to the rear and to the side, and the use is one that is needed in the borough and the region, and we think it's compatible with the area and supports the borough's long-range goals, as set forth in the master plan and the growth management plan. Approval of this requested use variance will enable the site to be developed with a use that's compatible with the surrounding area and lend support to the downtown mixed-use commercial area and district that's already existing and it is envisioned to continue to develop. If, uh, when, if developed as proposed, this site will serve to advance some of the recommendations, um, in the master plan as well. And also in the twenty twenty-one growth management plan, including the creation of a more cohesive and pedestrian-friendly street frontage, a mix of housing types along the corridors leading to downtown, and the prioritization of projects within the borough's opportunity zone. My testimony tonight will affirm, and I hope the board will agree, that the proposed residential development is compatible with the location and it can be developed in har- and operated in harmony with the existing uses in the area, um, and that the proposal will make efficient use of the site and be an asset to the borough and certainly won't have any detrimental impacts on the surrounding area. In considering, uh, an application for a D one use variance, the board must consider the positive and the negative criteria, as you know. For the positive criteria, we must, uh, prove to your satisfaction that there are special reasons for the board to grant the requested variance relief and showing that the site and the use are peculiarly fitted to this particular location. This proof requires that we demonstrate that the site is particularly suited to the proposed location, um, and the structure, and that special reasons exist for the grant of the variances. Special reasons are defined by the purposes of zoning set forth in municipal land use law, and we believe that the proposal will promote the general welfare and advance the purposes of MLUO, the municipal land use law, and the borough's master plan and zoning ordinances. And then to the negative criteria, we must demonstrate that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good, that it won't impair the character of the neighborhood, and that it will not have a substantially detrimental impact on the surrounding properties, and that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the borough's master plan and zoning ordinance. So before specifically addressing the positive criteria and the purposes of zoning, I just wanted to talk briefly about the larger land use planning picture and how the proposal relates to sound land use planning that's been happening here in Glassboro. Um, we've reviewed the growth management plan, as I had indicated, and it sets forth a vision statement that embodies the community's aspirations for the future. The, the applicant does understand the housing challenges that are created by the presence of the growing university in this relatively small town, and these challenges are really highlighted throughout the borough's planning documents, including the master plan and the growth management plan. The twenty twenty master plan reexamination noted that the borough's two primary land, land planning concerns were, one, downtown redevelopment and revitalization, and two, addressing the impacts of Rowan's expansion on stable residential neighborhoods. Both the master plan and the growth management plan, um, identify the erosion of stable residential neighborhoods caused by the transient student population as a significant issue, and the growth management plan aims to identify ways that this can be mitigated or turn the challenges into opportunities. That plan also provides that, quote, "encouraging and allowing for higher density non-student developments along key downtown or other main economic corridors should also be prioritized to offer a variety of high-quality housing options, provide a diversity of housing options, will it help to ensure Glassboro can effectively cater to its existing residents while also attracting working professionals, including current faculty and staff of the university, to relocate to Glassboro and support the continued revitalization of the community." So the growth management plan recommends adjusting the borough's zoning to promote mixed-use development and balanced residential districts, and it encourages higher residential density along Delsey Drive. This site is pro, not on Delsey Drive, but it is proximate within a quarter mile of Delsey Drive. So we believe that it can, it is part of this overall vision. It can be, and it is consistent with the growth management plan. Further, the proposed development and the people who live there will support the viability of the central business district. And as you know, for downtown districts to really thrive, they need a stable year-round population. So this proposed development will enhance, uh, enhance that population. As it is proximate to, but not at the center of the downtown area, it's a good location for residential as opposed to commercial uses. The particular suitability of this site for the proposed use has to do with the location of the property, the physical characteristics of the property, and how the location and the characteristics relate to the borough's overall vision plan. We do believe that this use is appropriately paired with a property that's well-suited to accommodate it and the building, and will be made more suitable with the new streetscape and the improvements along the frontage. The proposed multi-family residential use is particularly fitted to this specific location, and without variance relief, this site will probably remain in its current state, uh, because the per, the permitted use, which is single-family residential, um, doesn't have, there's not too much opportunity on the site for that use since it is a constrained seven acre, seven acre property. Do we have, do we have the, the elevations? Oh, the ladder here.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I couldn't see the narrow blocks arriving. The, uh, the elevations are, were part of the submission package and they are, should we call them A two?
We, we, we should, and, and they were in fact, uh, circulated, so thank you. Anybody need a copy?
I do.
If you'd assist the gentleman?
Based on some of the feedback that the applicant received from, uh, the workshop meeting that was attended back in, I think it was in the late spring, the applicant has designed the building with a residential look, you know, with the peaked roofs, um, and that is where the fifty-one foot height comes from. The borough's definition of height is from grade to the very, very top of the roof, some, the, the highest point of the roof. Some municipalities have to an average between the peak and eve, but in Glassboro it's to the peak, so that's why the fifty-one feet, it is only three stories. Um, and the peak gives it a residential look. So I wanted to just highlight that before moving on to, um, the special reasons, and the proposed use does advance the purposes of zoning and the borough's master plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, specifically, section two A encourages municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner that will provo- promote the public health, safety and general welfare. This proposal promotes the general welfare by providing an appropriate use and a location that is well-suited to the use. The D one variance will also promote the general welfare by enabling efficient use of land with, in a location that has access to necessary infrastructure and that is compatible with other existing and, uh, and propose, or underdeveloped, buildings that are under development in the area. Without the zoning board's approval of the proposal, the site will remain likely in limbo as it's unlikely to be developed with the permitted use at a scale that's appropriate to the site and location. Also granting this relief will be responsive to the evolving needs of the community and will embrace the flexible thinking that's needed to respond to changing conditions as outlined in the growth management plan. Also, section two D, to ensure that the development of individual municipalities does not conflict with the development and general welfare of neighboring municipalities, the county and the state as a whole. This site is in playing area one on the state plan map, um, which is an area where state plan policies, as well as county policies, promote coordinated development and redevelopment and, and specifically, um, intend to revitalize cities and towns, promote growth in compact forms, reverse the trend towards further sprawl and protect natural resources. So this is an area that's targeted for smart and sensible growth and development and where the integration of land uses is encouraged and higher residential densities are also encouraged. Um, also, section two G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential, recreation, commercial, industrial, both private and public, according to their respective environmental requirements, to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. For the reasons already explained, we believe this is an appropriate location for this proposed use and that the site can be developed in a manner that respects the surrounding character and the environment. In developing the vision plan, master plan and zoning regulations, it's not always possible for a municipality to anticipate, um, all the ways that a community's needs may change and all the va- various economic and operational shifts that might require creative responses, and this proposal does require some flexibility in the type of use permitted, but overall, we believe it'll support the borough's vision. For a co- a cohesive central business district that includes co- commercial, institutional and residential uses. And then lastly, section two I, to promote a vis- a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. This proposal has been designed to be compatible with the character of the area. The proposal will enable updated building facades that'll offer a fresh alternative for those seeking new multi-family housing opportunities. And further, the architectural review by the board prior to site plan approval, because this is only the use variance, will ensure that the appearance of the building and the site improvements are coordinated and context-sensitive. Not only will the proposed use and building height not impair the intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, but the proposal will advance some of the goals and objectives in the master plan and growth management plan. The two thousand four master plan notes that townhouses and multi-family housing can accommodate a growing number of smaller households as well as provide design flexibility to ensure the protection of environmentally sensitive areas. And that is what we're trying to accomplish on this site. The two thousand mask, four master plan sets forth nine overall community goals as well as redevelopment objectives. These goals have been reinforced with each reexamination report that's happened since two thousand four, and several of the goals and objectives will be advanced by this development proposal. Um, the master plans also support the use of redevelopment to provide specific zoning solutions for designated areas. And we can see that the borough has been proactive with the use of redevelopment throughout in different areas of the borough. Um, and this proposal will enable an efficient redevelopment through private initiative with no need for public intervention and the creation of a redevelopment plan, which of course is, takes time and is worthwhile if it's needed. Uh, but here you have, um, an investor that would like to initiate it on his own. Generally, the proposal supports master plan goals and objectives in that it will strengthen and support the central business district. It will contribute to the strengthening and preservation of residential neighborhoods by providing an alternative housing option for smaller households that may later decide to invest in homes in the borough. It's part of a continuum of, continuum of housing. Um, it will ensure attractive visual environment and balance environmental protection with appropriately scaled development. Neither the requested variances nor the proposal overall will undermine the policies and pr- goals or objectives or the overall intent of the land use plan. And then as to the negative criteria, um, there will not be a substantial detriment to the public good resulting from this proposal, and there won't be a substantially detrimental impact on surrounding properties. Further, the proposal, though the proposal is a deviation from the uses that were anticipated in the zoning and permitted in the zoning ordinance, the proposal will not impair the intent and purpose of the master plan or the zoning ordinance. Uh, the site is large enough to accommodate the proposed use, and it's located on the periphery of an area that is targeted for commercial and mixed-use development. The proposal will enable development of a site, of the site in a manner that's consistent with the mixed-use development in the area. The conceptual elevation demonstrates that the building has been carefully designed to have a residential character with an updated appeal. The parking has been placed at the back and the sides of the building to ensure, um, an attractive pedestrian streetscape, and the front of the building will be landscaped and park-like. The por, this portion of the R five zoning district only includes four lots and then a portion of lot thirteen, which is behind it, which is part of the, uh, Park Crest Apartment Complex. The other R five areas in the borough are much larger and they contain significantly larger residential neighborhoods. Allowing a variance for lot fourteen, the lot in question, will not alter the character of the R five zoning in the borough overall. The proximity of the site to the central business district will be an incentive for people to use alternative means of transportation, such as walking or biking for short trips, and for all these reasons, we think that the use variance can be granted without undermining the borough's overall objectives or the, and the purposes of the master plan and zoning. And so while this proposal is for a different type of housing that is permitted in the R five zone, it will nonetheless meet the purposes of the R five zoning district and support the borough's land use planning goals. We believe the pro- proposal is a better planning alternative for this particular site than traditional single-family residential development would be, and approval of this requested use variance will enable the property to be put to productive use and improved and utilized, be utilized in a manner that is compatible and complementary to the surrounding area. So overall, we believe that the positives, um, significantly outweigh any perceived negatives, uh, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Uh, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Board have any question?
Yeah. I have a bunch of them. Okay, um, first of all, how many units are there and how many parking spaces are there available? Parking's a big issue in Glassboro.
Okay, um, I'll give you the answer and then, um, the engineer can come and. It is, it does meet the residential site improvement standards, uh, based on the number of units, eighty-nine units, and I believe it's a hundred and sixty-eight.
Hundred and sixty-seven.
Hundred and sixty-seven.
And, and you're required to have how many?
One sixty-seven.
One sixty-seven.
And you have one sixty-seven?
Yes.
Does that allow for the number of people that you expect to be there because I see in the standards, of course, you get something like one point eight cars for, but that, that apartment has two real people and they probably both have jobs they're going to in different directions. Or if it's one of the spouses staying home and raising the kids, they still need a car to go take them to the doctor and everything else. Do you have extra, do you have guest spots? Are there more parking spaces than you, than you need or what?
The residential site improvement standards, the partner requirements built in, uh, half the space in the, in their standard.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, the residential site improvement standards build, builds in a guest, guest spaces in, in their standards. So when they list their standards as part of that, there is, you know, usually a half a space for each unit as a guest space or overflow space.
So part of that overage that you're looking for is already incorporated into the formula.
Well, the gentleman was saying it's baked in. What you're saying is, well, have you been to Glassboro lately?
Yeah.
Because, you know, parking is a challenge. So while we understand RSIS is, you know, that's the standard literally, um, the C use variance and Ms. Cameo is expressing it. I guess what I'm trying to say is, how'd you arrive at this number as the appropriate number of parking spaces as opposed to having some additional parking spaces? Nobody ever hollered at somebody for having too many parking spaces.
I mean, if you have two bedrooms, it's conceivable here in Glassboro that that's four cars.
Hold the phone.
Because you've got two college students in one and two college students in another.
Curtain that they're gonna tell us about.
Well, well, the, the, you know, the majority of them are one bedroom. It's fifty-nine one bedroom and thirty-two bedroom. So, you know, the count is, you know, more, more one bedroom. And, you know, the, the state issues these guidelines in regards to overall parking count and that's what the plan, you know, followed. I don't have a specific background in, 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 you know, analysis on how par- or apartments will be utilized. You have to utilize the information that is provided or, or put forth in, in the regulations. Um, and that, that's what this plan is designed towards.
And the apartments themselves are marketed more towards a moderate income households. Uh, so it would be understandable to have two folks there, uh, raising a small family, no more than four people in a single apartment.
Right, well, poor people have cars now.
Sure, yeah, no, I get that, I get that.
I mean, around here, it's like, if we put in another couple thousand parking spaces, we might be close to covering everybody. I mean, it, it's just, um, the neighborhood I live in na- uh, ha- lived in all my life is starting to get rentals of these family homes. And they have more cars. And so even though we have no parking on the street from two to six, they have no place else to go. So now there's a whole scheme where they can park on, so many of them can park on the street all night long. But, you know, there's a lot of issues with parking in Glassboro. There's a car on Gerard Avenue which has no parking on either side of the street. That's there all the time parked in the street for some reason the last two or three weeks. I almost smashed into it when I turned the corner because I don't expect any cars to be parked on the road the first time I saw it. And it was like, turn the corner and it's halfway in my lane, so. You know, it's, it's an issue that I think needs to be discussed very carefully. To make sure you have a guest parking and addition, enough for the people to live there.
Certainly, we appreciate that feedback, um, we evaluate. In fact, a big part of this process, folks, has really been communicating with the town to ensure that we do have its best interests at heart. That's why we've met with Mr. Pierpont, we met the development, with the development review committee to discuss issues just like this. So the plan that we have before you today has been carefully corrected with that in mind, of course. And we are always open up to those suggestions, so the feedback is well received.
The, the other thing, um, is there any area for rest area? I mean, you know, benches outside, a, 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 uh,
Some kind of amenity?
Yeah, like, and if you're having kids, a little, you know, some, something that's a place where they can play securely without, you know, falling into a ditch or something. Um, is there anything, any playground or walking or benches to just sit outside on a lovely day along the road?
That look on his face sounds like a no.
Well, I think the applicant's intent is that once the use variance, if the use variance is achieved, then the site plan will be prepared and then there'll be consideration for, you know, what else can fit on the site and what, what the needs are on the site. And, you know, there are constrained areas as we discussed, but along those areas, there certainly may be an opportunity for like a walking path or something along those lines or like a little gazebo for people to sit in. But I would also say, and, um, I don't know if we want to have Rich address it, but, um, Mr. St. Mar, but the intent of the applicant is not to market it to families. Um, you know, they're mostly one-bedroom units, so the idea is to have.
Teachers, nurses, stuff like that.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's certainly not geared toward families.
Students also, right?
And, and not really.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he says students also.
Students, students are not a target market for this development.
The idea is to price it a little bit above what a student typically paid. But, but a paraprofessional, like we were saying, teachers, sure, nurses, you know, people like that.
That's within the wheelhouse, for sure.
My teacher's salary could have never afforded a place like that.
Can I ask the inspector, since he's on the, uh, planning board, were you satisfied with the parking spots?
Well, so I want to swear in the voice of Glassboro. Swear of firm testimony about to give us true and correct information, knowledge and information, belief?
I did.
Thank you, sir, and you are?
I'm Dr. Pierpont, zoning officer.
All right, we heard the chairman, do you have a response?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you repeat the question for me?
When they went through the planning process for the parking spots of the planning board?
They, they were, uh, present at the workshop committee with members of the planning board. Uh, I believe your vice chair was there at that meeting and, uh, are professionals. And, and of course, this was all concept at the time, so we bounced back and forth with number of parking spaces and things like that. I think that the site's actually been adapted since that meeting to allow for more parking than they originally proposed. And the fact that they're meeting the RSIS standards, uh, I, I, I think is satisfactory, uh, if, once it meet those standards. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We also, just my recollection if it comes back, we also talked about benches and sort of recreational areas. So that was also, uh, factored into the concept today. Still, still a possibility. Yeah.
Yeah, at the DRC meeting, that was one of the things, the original concept had broken up parking, there was parking in the front. So it was requested that all the parking get removed, moved into the rear. Uh, we have the sixty-foot, uh, grass area as, uh, Ms. Fury had indicated. That, that area's gonna be, you know, landscaped with walking and, and some benches and such are gonna be proposed in those areas. Obviously, when we do the complete package and make a submission for site plan.
Six hundred feet across the front of the site on High Street, we wanted to beautify it as much as we could. And that was a, a big key piece of feedback, one of the true valuable items that we got from our meeting with the development review committee. And we incorporated, incorporated that round the ball, for sure.
Yes, Mr. Senator.
Uh, are there, excuse me, are there, parking is, parking in the back of the apartments or in the front?
The parking is in the rear of the building.
So everything is gonna be in the rear?
That's correct.
Of the.
There are, there are some spaces to the right.
Right.
Over here, but it's minimal. And that frontage area where those cars are parked, heavily landscaped, uh, firms and whatnot.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Chair. Uh, my name is Gregory Sullivan, professional engineer, professional planner, in this case acting professional planner. Uh, Mrs. Adamson has written a letter, um, or, you know, this, this is an application for a use variance. The applicant needed to, and I, I believe that Mrs. Fury provided extensive testimony with regard to the.
Keep your voice up so they can hear you, 'cause they're all the way back there.
I apologize, I will try and project a little more. Mrs. Fury has, has indicated the positive, negative criteria. Uh, the board's consideration is a weighing, um, uh, action. You need to weigh whether the, the positives outweigh the negatives to the approved, uh, uh, requested approval of a use variance, uh, to allow multi-family dwellings, multi-family use in a single-family zone. In addition to that, the height variance, the height variance kind of falls out of that height of the building. Uh, proposed fifty-one feet plus or minus at this point, but it definitely exceeds the, uh, height requirement of no more than ten feet and no more than, uh, ten percent of your existing. So, so we have a D one variance and a D two variance. We also bring to the table, Mrs. Adams wishes to bring to the table, issues, uh, there is a requirement of buffer between multi-family and single-family dwellings, uh, along that one side. Currently scales about fifteen feet, uh, to the, uh, west side of the property, uh, which would need to be buffered. Uh, your buffering, um, is, is more extensive than that. So the applicant should take a look, a look at that particular area in their development of the plan. Uh, Mrs. Adams also goes on to talk about the recreation improvements. Uh, you would require, um, multi-purpose field, basketball court or pool required for this number of units on the site. Um, in lieu of that, there's a contribution to the Glassboro Rec Fund, so they could potentially pay money. Um, if the applicant makes a case and, and, or a little bit of this point of a gazebo and some walking trails, you've got to kind of weigh that at the time of site plan. It's not a subject for tonight, but just consideration for the future. So, I mean, you know, I think you, you probably could be looking at a substantial contribution.
So, wh- why don't you just stop for a second, Mr. Chairman? You have, I mean, you're, you're under, you're hearing what he's saying, correct?
Of course.
And you're acquainted with what he's saying, correct?
We are, we are.
Have you had a meaning, I know we're not at site plan, but have you had a meaningful conversation about that or anything?
We've taken every, every ounce of feedback that we've gotten from the borough, we've taken seriously and into consideration. Um, we've met extensively with respect to Ms. Adams' letter, uh, with respect to the engineering professionals as well. Um, everything has been considered into the plan you have here, but it's still adaptable, right? So we're here.
Right. So, I guess what I'm trying to, let's, oh, I'll be blunt.
I'm picking up the tea leaves.
So, you're not, you know, you're amenable to maybe a contribution coming up in your future in lieu of a, a swimming pool or a basketball court or something like that?
Yes, and that calculation could be entertained and, and discussed.
Right, 'cause I don't think the board's gonna be looking for a swimming pool or a basketball court or something like that.
Right.
A little bit of bench or two.
We, we get that, we get that. But I just wanted.
You walk a bit, you sit with your kids, like.
So, I just wanted, wanted to make sure that we're.
Understood, no, understood, recognized and appreciated, thank you.
All right, good, 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 good.
So, and again, Mrs. Adams wishes to bring to the board's attention, um, the applicant is proposing to overdouble the density of an existing, you know, the existing zone. Existing zone, um, is, uh, one dwelling unit for basically about eight thousand square feet. The applicant is proposing a site, uh, which is constrained by wetlands. And there's a lot of open space that'll end up being, uh, utilized, uh, and, and can not be touched by the, by any, uh, action of the, of the applicant, but you're still gonna end up with a density of about thirty-five hundred, uh, square foot per dwelling unit, which is a doubling of that density. Um, the board has to do the weighing factor, I mean, should you grant the use application? Uh, should you grant the, the D one and the D six, uh, variances? At the end of the day, um, I would anticipate that there'll be additional, um, bulk standards or minor variances that, uh, would be considered in, in, uh, the application of a, a, a formal site plan. Uh, the consideration of that site plan, so you're gonna, you're gonna end up with additional, uh, variances. But today, we have four, uh, before this board, uh, those two main ones, the D one and the D six. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I issued a letter, essentially, um, just basic kind of standard comments on the concept plan since this, this is not a, a site plan application as we have heard, not a, not a full engineering review. Um, the applicant's engineer did respond with a letter. I, I just wanted to bring up one, one thing on parking, it wasn't in the letter, and then one other item in the letter. I had mentioned about, um, a space for moving in and moving out, just for, for, for occupants of the apartments as they move in and move out. The, the concept plan didn't, didn't have something like that, like a dedicated space, a curb ramp to roll, roll things in.
So what's up with your loading and unloading stuff?
Mr. Littlehouse?
Yep, the, the rendered exhibit in front of you, it actually incorporated a, a loading space for, you know, a single-unit box truck. And there's relatively small apartments with, you know, eighteen-wheelers.
Point it out.
Yep, it's, it's located at the rear of the building along the west, west side. We propose it oversized, uh, with in-depth space to, to handle the move in and move out of, uh, you know, residents.
Does that make sense, Mr. Cosmo?
It does, thank you for, I didn't realize that had been added, but that, that's great for, for possible use. And then the other thing on the parking, I just wanted to ask about the stormwater management design. Real- realizing that this is still a concept plan and I would recommend if you're, if you're, you know, when you, if and when you go through the final design, if there is opportunities to sneak in a few other parking spaces, if there's, if there's stormwater management bases, possibly shrink, uh, maybe there's some other green space to disperse, maybe a small stormwater management area. I realize it's pretty snug the way you have it, uh, but I think it's at least a recommendation that you could look into that, especially on the small parking field on the right, um, you know, to, to edge a few more spaces in there.
Yeah, obviously, when we go through the site plan, we'll see what we can do without adding some additional, uh, parking spaces.
And when Mr. Littlehouse says, see what we can do, his attorney actually means, uh, we're gonna try to make that happen as much as we can. Okay, it's a serious concern and we're taking it seriously, okay?
I think this is a simple question. Um, when I'm looking at the picture, I don't see any place for the trash.
In the back.
Is there a road or?
It's in, it's in the rear, uh.
Right there in the corner.
It's there.
Oh, wait a minute, and yours, okay, right there. Do people bring all their trash there and, and there's somebody coming to pick it up or is it picked up at longer homes or?
It, it'll likely be serviced by private trash removal company that comes on a, a weekly basis.
And, and yes, the re- the residents will bring it out to the trash dumpster area, put it in there and then the, you know, private company will come pick it up and do separate recycling and, you know, please.
Any other questions? Mr. Harvey?
Truly unconcerned about the height of the, uh, this, this structure. I, I, when I think in terms of Glassboro, I realize one thing and that is that that's gonna be one of the highest structures that we have here in Glassboro. Um, in addition to that, I'm also concerned about that particular area, you know, where that, uh, traffic. Um, being able to get in, come out, sometimes that area can really be congested. Um, so have you, have you, I guess you have taken that into consideration? I, I sat back and I listened to the engineers and I seen I'm moving that somebody addressed that traffic issue there because that can be, um, that can be a handful at times.
No, I, I certainly understand what you're saying. We did input two, uh, ingress and egress spots on the map itself to manage that flow. I mean, the street, High Street is what it is, right, to the traffic patterns. Um, I don't believe that it'd be, uh, greatly impacted by the addition of the residents. But I would say that Mr. Littlehouse would be qualified to answer some of those concerns as well in terms of how it was designed. There was no traffic study done, um, in terms of the impact of that. Uh, but that's certainly something that we would consider as a condition of the site plan approval, um, especially in conjunction with the borough's concerns with respect to parking. So that's on the table, that's definitely a.
Yeah, because even with, uh, the residents that we have there, if, if I heard the figure correctly, we're actually doubling that now. You know, so, so.
Well, I think, I think you talked them into it. Um, so you'll have a little traffic study done and in anticipation of site plan.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's clear to us now, standing in front of you, that that's a much bigger concern, um, than traffic and the parking itself, so anything we can do to alleviate the town's concerns.
And Mr. Harvey, in the applicant's defense, the height is driven a little bit by what the town wanted and Ms., uh, Leah Fury Bruder was talking about the fact that they wanted a residential look and that begot the peak roof, which then elevated the building more. So it's one of these things for high appeal, curb appeal, however you want to describe it, that created this additional height.
One of the things that we did as we went through the development process of this project is we actually attempted to mirror other local sites. One of the things that we did is we went through the development process of this project is we actually attempted to mirror other local sites.
Right.
Um, so that it was aesthetically very similar, maybe different inherently, but similar in the same respect. So no albatrosses here.
Yeah, and, and if I may, um, that peak roof would not kick you into the variance if it had been a flat roof. So if you look at the apartment complexes to the, to the east of this applicant's site, um, they're, they're basically a master roof. It's a flatter roof. So if you had put the, um, the emphasis and put the peak into it, I mean, you'd probably get kicked into variances with those also. But that really drove the variance requirement is the, is the look from the street of the peak roof. So we, we would support the applicant's request for that particular, um, variance, um, if we're to consider it um, that comes out of the, uh, the look of the, what the, what the site development board wanted to see in the elevations.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Certainly.
These are not, these windows up here are not apartments or rooms. They're just like dormers, right?
I don't believe they are. They're just, um, uh, facade.
Like dormers?
Yes.
You would put in a house, but there's no room up there.
Any other questions? All right. Let's open it up to the public. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
On favor? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak about this item that's on the agenda? Since nobody's come forward, do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Oh, you to close?
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. So be it. It's a pleasure of the board.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members, I, the applicant's looking for a D one and a D six use variance. Um, of course, contingent on site plan, they've already agreed to, um, in anticipation of site plan, uh, submit a, a traffic report. And any other attendant, um, uh, variances that pop up at site plan will be addressed then. But is that enough counsel? Do you want more than that?
No.
All right, there you go.
I think that sums it up in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay, then I would move that we approve the request and that it includes handling the things that.
So it's the, the motion to approve the use variance for D one, D six use variance, contingent on site plan, uh, review together and then at site plan we consider.
And, and meeting with our
Right.
our, our people if they have discussions, if there's an issue coming up.
Right.
Right.
Do I have a second?
Second, that motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Harvey?
Four.
Mr. Santor?
In favor?
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Ms. Wyman? Four. Mr. Jimenez?
In favor?
Ms. Camiolo?
In favor.
Mr. Moody?
Four.
Congratulations.
Well, thanks for coming by.
Thank you, folks. I, I do want to make one comment just generally to you. This particular client, um, we have three sites currently that we're looking to develop things. So it's really important for them, it's certainly important for me, to continue this relationship of communication and to be a good neighbor. So we do appreciate very much so the opportunity to meet with you folks and to meet with your development review committee. So we look forward to doing more business in Glassboro and further investing in you. Thank you.
Good to meet you. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Um, we have no reports, workshop committee. I wasn't able to make it.
I wasn't able to make it.
I wasn't able to make it. All right. Business stream is one of them. And there was one or two. The other one is, um, the Jersey Joint Dispensary.
It's what?
The Jersey Joint Dispensary.
Where's that supposed to be?
Yeah, Seven-Eleven State Street. It's a corporation, I have to bet. I don't know about research on it. No, it's not restored. This is another one.
What happened to that?
They went away.
They went away. They're just sticking with medical.
Because they couldn't find a parking lot that they could throw all the people in and bust them over. I couldn't, I, that is still one of the funniest things. I think Glassboro, I'm going to place a car. Just use that help.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you. Thanks so much for your time. You're good, you're good.
Well, everyone should be, everyone should be so polite.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
So we don't want to solicit any for it? No, no, no. Any old business? Any new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Suppose so be it. Our next meeting is going to be November seventeenth. So if you can't make it, please let Tyree know ahead of time.
So far, I don't know if you have anything.
Okay.
And where is, what, what part of State Street is Seven-Eleven?
Seven-Eleven, I have no.
I was wondering if it was the car place that just never got off of, uh, what it used to be being.
Could be, but Two Bix is first out there. Seven hundred something thousand.
Ooh.
Which is? Two Bix. Hey, take care. Thank you.